Call this meeting to orders, you can carry board of county commissioners Thursday, December 2, 2021, regular meeting. And Mr. Clark, please call roll.
Commissioner Garrison.
Here.
Commissioner Granados.
Here.
Commissioner Houdak.
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Here.
Commissioner Leon.
Here.
Commissioner Palmieri Mude.
Here.
Commissioner State.
Here.
Commissioner Vice Chair Williams and Chairman Mirabell.
Present.
Chairman, you have eight commissioners present for the regular meeting.
Thanks. Can you please lead us in prayer, exclusive to the five?
Praise God, give her peace and love her charity for the entire family of nations to agree with what is will, to grant the light of the spirit of all to work for justice and peace.
Praise allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clark, please read the Statement of Compliance to the Old Republic Meetings Act.
Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of the New Jersey statute of statute, that a 10 half for section 10 of the Old Republic Meetings Act, at the notice of this meeting, the Board of County Commissioners, county committee has been given by mailing annual meeting schedule through the 2021, along with pure matter changes, necessitated by circumstance, to the newspapers circulating within the county of New York who are designated through such notice, and by opposing annual meeting schedule through the 2021 administration building, and further by filing an annual meeting schedule through year 2021, will be offered out to county clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. We have a motion to approve communications.
Someone?
Moved by Commissioner Granados.
Second.
And second by Commissioner Mude. Mr. Clark, please call roll.
Commissioner Garrison.
Yes.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Houdak.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mude.
Aye.
Commissioner State.
Yes.
And Chairman Mirabell.
You okay?
Yes.
Aye.
Chairman, you have eight votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. We have a motion approved in minutes of the October 7th Agenda and Regular Meeting, the October 21st Agenda and Regular Meeting, and the November 4th Agenda and Regular Meeting.
Summer.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kowalski, second by Commissioner State. Mr. Clark, please call roll.
Commissioner Garrison.
Yes, all except number three. I was absent on the October 21st Agenda Setting Session.
October 21st Agenda?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye, aye.
Commissioner Houdak.
Aye, aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Leon.
I do, I would then.
Commissioner Palmieri Mude.
Aye, aye.
Commissioner State.
abstaining from October 7th Agenda and regular, please.
Yes to the other two?
Yes, we have them. Thank you.
Is October 7?
Yes, regular and agenda.
Thank you. And Chairman Mirabell.
Aye, aye.
Chairman, you have eight votes in the affirmative on resolutions with the exception of the October 21st and the October 7th Agenda and Regular Meeting. The October 21st was the Agenda Meeting, where you have seven votes in the affirmative with one exception. That's on those three minutes, October 7th Agenda and Regular and October 21st Agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clark. Tonight, we have three ordinances for adoption. Clerk of the Board, please read the first ordinance by title.
Thank you, Chairman. Ordinance number 833-2021, an ordinance to amend the laws of Union County Administrative Code and policies and general legislation by amending Part 1, Union County Administrative Code, Chapter 1, Union County Government Structure, Article 21, Department of Public Safety, Section 1, Route 128, Office of Health Management, and Article 24, Department of Economic and Health.
Okay, very good. The meeting is now open to the public with the purpose of commenting on ordinance 833-2021 only. Kindly come forward and state your name and town of residence, and adhere to the five-minute time limit. Mr. Clark, is there any special instructions tonight for the public, other than the podium being on that side?
Chairman, the only thing I would want to say for the record or for your direction is we are at capacity in our meeting room. A second meeting section was set up on another floor where we have audio of this meeting, and we will have them join us to speak once everyone in this room has had the opportunity to speak on this ordinance. It will be the same moving forward to the subsequent ordinances and the resolutions within that. So, once we do go through each of these individuals, we will check in to see if there are another, if anyone in the other room would like to participate, because we will make that.
All right, that's fine. All right, very good. So, the meeting is now open to the public. Please come forward and speak on the ordinance 833-2021. And just while Mr. Patterson is approaching, I'll just, there's no one in the other overflow room.
As of? Chairman, as of now, there is no one in the other room, and I have been in contact with a staff member who's been assigned to that room to advise me if there's anyone that would like to speak.
Okay, very good.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Commissioner Board, Bruce Patterson, Garwood, oh, and Dr. Garrison, of course. Just an easy question on this, probably, are they down there partying in that other floor?
No, they're not.
Glad you're welcome to join if you were. It's gonna be a long walk, though, you know? Anyway, no, simple question. Just for the public, what are these two articles being changed? Could you give an overview of what they are? Thank you very much.
Okay, yeah, County Council, please come up to that, please.
Thank you, Chairman. There are really two parts to this ordinance. The first one is to bring us in compliance with federal law, which requires that the county have a position called the ADA Compliance Officer. We recently did, as this board knows, we recently did a study of the county to find out where we can do better in complying with ADA requirements, and this will create a new position to hire someone to oversee that process. The second part of it has to do with Department of Public Safety and specifically the Office of Health Management. This is more of a technical, just bringing our ordinance in line with the process that's actually been used in that department, and so it doesn't make any really dramatic change into really just reconfiguring the ordinance.
Very good. Thank you, County Council.
Thank you, Chairman.
Anyone else wish to speak on this ordinance? Doesn't appear to be, and I will formally close the public portion and ask that Commissioner Kowalski move this ordinance?
Yes, Chairman. I move ordinance number 833-2021 for final reading and authorize the board to advertise same accordance before law.
Thank you, Commissioner. May I have seconds, please?
By second.
And by Commissioner Leon, Mr. Clark, please call roll.
Commissioner Garrison.
Yes.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Houdak.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mude.
Aye.
Commissioner State.
Yes.
And Chairman Mirabell.
Aye.
Chairman, you have eight votes in the affirmative for ordinance number 833-2021.
Very good. We'll move on to the second ordinance, that is 834-2021. Mr. Clark, please read the second ordinance by title.
Ordinance number 834-2021, bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements in the acquisition of new additional or replacement equipment and machinery, new additional furnishings, new communication and signal system equipment, new information technology and health communication equipment, new automotive vehicles, including original apparatus and equipment, in, by, and for the county of Union, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $49,070,544 to pay the cost thereof, to appropriate state grants and county open state trust fund, to make down payment, to authorize issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
Okay, very good. The public comment is now open for our purpose of commenting on 834-2021 only. Please come forward, state your name and town of residence, and please adhere to the five-minute time limit.
I think we should put the podium on the other side. Big mistake, sit over on the far side. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Commissioner Board, and Dr. Garrison. Bruce Patterson, Garwood, New Jersey. $49 million, that's a big number. I've seen bigger, a lot smaller, too, but I would assume maybe direct detail will be coming up and telling you that it's not all $49 million for borrowing. It's gonna be so much for grants, so much for down payments and such, so I hope you don't. But it is a big number. Two items that jump out at me that I need clarification within that $49 million, the purchasing of property. One of them is the EMS property in Rosel Park. I'm not 100% sure exactly how much you're paying for it. I have a document that says it's $7 million, but that sounds really far fetched. At the most, I noticed from assessments and such that the property really is more or less $3 million, $3.5 million top, based on the adjusted ratios and rates, and I don't know if it's $7 million, but it seems like there's another $3.5 million that's in error, need to be reset. The question is, how much are we really paying for that EMS property going to the county? It can't be something, it's impossible. The other property that I'm questioning is the one that was the Berkeley Heights property at one time, the, it was the Catering Hall at 737 Springfield Avenue. And there, I'd like to know the total blocks that are being purchased. There should be four blocks. I only see two, but it looks like there's missing block 504, 1 and 2. I just need clarification. 501, 1 and 3, and 504, 1 and 2. So, it's four blocks that are being purchased for the $2.5 million. If it's anything, that $2.5 million is also a little over the top wise, but I can live with it, provided it's all four blocks. If it's only the two blocks, then it really should only give out $1.4 million, and there's a million dollars missing somewhere. So, but that's my two questions that really need clarification. Thank you very much.
All right, very good. I'll turn those questions right over to the county manager. You will address it. Can I bring the microphone over? No, you can. Give me the steps in.
Mr. Patterson, it's $700,000 approximately for the Rosel Park property, not $7 million.
Thank you.
And just for your couple of other questions, the total funding for projects are $49 million, but of that $13 million is grand plenty, so the total bonding is $36 million. In this year's budget, we are paying off $46 million, so we are ahead $10 million, $10 million of debt we're paying down from previous years. Fourth year in a row, we are paying more than a million.
Bruce, I have a lot, I have a lot to talk about.
Bruce, do you want to talk about the lots and blocks?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I don't have the lot and blocks with me. I can represent that the property being bought is all that's being offered for sale. It is adjacent to county parkland, and it is being purchased through open space. The price is based upon appraisal that we receive, so it's right on the appraisal ladder.
Yeah, thank you, Bruce, for that additional information. I saw Vicki Durbin-Drake, who was our trust fund administrator, her office is 30 seconds away, so I'm gonna give her a minute to retrieve that information, just to satisfy Mr. Patterson's question. Vicki, can you add anything to that?
Top three, Chairman, it is lot 501, lot 1 and 3, and they are two.
1 and 3?
Correct.
All right, very good. Thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak on ordinance 834? Okay, I'll close that portion of the meeting, and I'll ask Commissioner Houdak to move ordinance 834-2021 for final reading.
Thank you, Chairman. I move ordinance number 834-2021 for final reading, and I want Clerk of the Board to advertise same accordance before law.
Thank you, Commissioner Houdak. How about a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kowalski. Mr. Clark, please hold roll.
Commissioner Garrison.
I'm going to abstain. I did request information when this ordinance was put forward, and I did not receive any additional information. I reached out to two of the Finance Committee people. I did not get a response. I'm a little disappointed in that. I did hear from the county manager. I did hear from a couple of the board members, but when you're not in on the committee to understand all the details, I do support the salary increases. There were some equity issues.
This is not, this is not that ordinance, Commissioner.
This is the salary.
This is the capital.
Okay. Well, I will defer and say my comments and repeat them again. So, I will vote yes on this ordinance, but I will repeat my comments on ordinance 834.
Okay, that's your prerogative.
Thank you for giving me permission for that. Thank you.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Mude.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mude.
Aye.
Commissioner State.
Yes.
Chairman Mirabell.
Aye.
Chairman, you have eight votes in the affirmative on ordinance number 834-2021.
Okay, very good. We'll move forward to the third ordinance. Mr. Clark, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance number 835-2021, the ordinance fixing the salaries of members of the Board of County Commissioners, County Manager, and Department Heads.
Okay, the meeting is now open to the public with the purpose of commenting on ordinance 835-2021 only. Please come forward, state your name and town of residence, and please adhere to the five-minute time limit.
My name is Ovee Slater. I am a Union County resident living on 811 Chandler Avenue, New Jersey. The question that I have on this board is, what are the adjustments to the Department Head salaries?
All right, you know what we're gonna do tonight? I'm gonna take all your comments, and we'll address all of them collectively at the end, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on the ordinance?
Hello, Ken Conley, Wynden, Derby. Happy holidays. It's nice to meet you, person, you've evolved. We've come a long way from the pandemic of, now going into 2022, soon to be. Here I have a certificate of appreciation from our director head. My name is, again, Ken Conley, working with Division of Social Services in Union County. I received a certificate of appreciation from Director Williams, Kelly Williams, and Deputy Director Tina Maria Lopez. It says here, it says appreciation, certificate of appreciation during the 2020 COVID-19 pandemic. As you know, we're going into 2022 very soon. And with that being said, it's a long pandemic, and the Union County has forgiven food drives for the public indeed. And in fact, I've worked a few of the food drives, and I've received this nice T-shirt, Union County Care. And I note that is true. And in regard to the proposed salary increases, with all due respect, we have been, as a CWA member, working without a contract since July of 2020. And I understand the county manager is, has proposed an 18.8% increase, and I understand, and we appreciate your service and everything you've done for the county of Union since March 1st of 2018. That's just shy of four years. And with that being said, we understand 18.8% is a high number. High numbers worth many small numbers. But we understand our negotiations committee with the county has, we have other, the Teamsters and other unions have settled for 2%. From what we're asking is that at least we match the cost of living. Social Security has updated their systems with a 5.9% to cost of living. We asked between 5.9% and 18.8. Me, this half way. We appreciate that.
Let me stop you just for a second. So, we don't collectively bargain in public, so you're not gonna get any satisfaction from this board as far as negotiating your contract? Sounds like that's what you try to do. We don't do that. We have no responsibility.
He's commenting.
This is commentary.
How's that with negotiation today?
It may, it may, but it's relative to 835-2021. Okay, just based on the salary request and for the commissioners and other department heads of Union County, we, of course, would like to meet. You guys meet us halfway. Anything less is a pay cut if you don't meet the cost of living. So, I really hope that Union County does care, because we are the hard workers that do work at the food drives, and I have seen a few of you there, I've seen the county manager. We appreciate it. I've seen Mr. Houdak, Commissioner Houdak there, the Thursday, sorry, the Saturday, the weekend before Thanksgiving. And we appreciate all your hard work, and I know with my fellow coworkers who work hard on a daily basis outside of regular food drives or anything new, we would just appreciate going forward to be considered for, to meet the cost of living plus that. And we appreciate, again, all the, all the hard work that the county manager and the commissioners and department heads has done for Union County. We just want to be considered, too.
All right, thank you. Thank, your time is.
Five minutes?
Yep, yep, okay. Thank you. Very good.
My name is Jen Levers. I have been a resident my entire life. I've been an employee for three and a half years. It's not only concerning, it's really disheartening when not only, so you guys start this meeting, not only with a prayer, but you started suggesting and thanking us as the staff, because you recognize that we are the wheels to the vehicle, right, that got us through all this. And then when we come up here and make such comments in regards to salary, you jump at us, right? That's important. It's very bothersome as well. We understand that you guys are doing a great job, so are we. And the thing is that you can have, you can buy the nicest vehicle in the world, right? But if it doesn't have wheels, can that vehicle move? No. We're the wheels that move this. So, we're all in this together, yes, but it doesn't seem like that when it comes down to pay. And when it comes down to comments, like the ones you made, he was just making a comment, and that was a heartfelt comment, we all felt, except you, because he commented on the 18%, that we don't see justified. Okay, so although you guys are taking the lead, without us, none of this is possible, not, not any of this. The food drives, I have done many of the food drives, okay, where I'm red in the face, I'm not doing photo ops, okay? I'm red in my face, and the next day, my body is completely sore. When I get COVID, when we test positive and I have to stay home, I've almost become homeless, on the verge of homelessness, because the county does not pay you if you test positive. The treatment that we have received, you know, you guys like to say, thank you, we thank the staff, everything is because of the staff, but we don't see that. We see, we hear words, but there's lack of action. And so, we're all here tonight in solidarity to tell you guys that. The other thing that bothers me, I'm gonna stop right there, is when we ask, it's like we're begging. I'm not begging. I've heard so many times, people say, you're thankful for having a job. I have a job, and I produce services, right? And in lieu of that, you pay me. That's, that's how that works. It's not only I should be thankful, we're all thankful, because we're all playing a part in this, but it doesn't seem like that when it comes down to the pay. It's very bothersome, and I don't see that 18% is justified, and we'd like to see that at the end of the day. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners and members of the public. My name is Mani Humphrey, and I have been working for the Division of Social Services for six years. I stand before you to address the standstill clerical space at Social Services. The starting salary for our clerical is $31,347. The max is $56,316. According to the Economic Policy Institute, the salary needed in order to attain a modest yet adequate standard of living in Union County for one adult is $40,912. For one adult and one child is $65,000. This includes housing, food, transportation, healthcare, taxes, childcare, and other necessities. I'm sure you're probably thinking, we'll move to another county where you can afford to live, but there is a contractual agreement that CWA members have to live in the county for 15 years before moving. It's an unsettling feeling to know some employees of Social Services are also clients of Social Services, all because employees are not getting paid the cost of living in a county the job requires us to live in. During the beginning of the pandemic, employees, including myself, volunteered and continued to work to serve the public. Department of Services did not close not one time. Giving us 2% does not boost the employee morale, it decreases the morale. I ask you for your assistance as Commissioners to help us reach a fair contract with the race reserved. Happy holidays.
Okay, anyone else wish to speak?
I got these raises here, and there is 18% for county manager, but there are fewer than like 8% to 11%. And a couple of the, I guess, engineering and park recreation, who I guess are the longest standing, got only 2%. Was there any thinking that went into these raises? Did you want to bring people up to a certain dollar amount? Or was it based on performance? Yeah, the things that address this at the end, it doesn't matter. But there doesn't seem to be any reason except you wanted to get them to a certain dollar figure. It seems like to me.
Who else wish to speak?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and Commissioner Board, Dr. Garrison, Bruce Patterson, Garwood, New Jersey. There is a reason why there is rage against the machine. We are looking at a two-tier level of society. We are looking at a two-tier level of society here, the ruling class and then the rest of us ravel and, and you can see them here now. And I warned you many years, you keep giving these four, five, six percent raises of your upper management, the other people are going to start wondering what the heck is going on. This ordinance contains its large unearned raises to the directors and county managers to raise some alarm as to whether the county government is working for us. The residents are just self-serving, they're politically connected, and to hell with your own. In two thousand and sixteen, I, I noticed the freeholders giving out four, five, six percent raises willy-nilly and commended, and commented on it every year. Just raises given for this year alone are eight percent, nine percent, eleven percent, eighteen percent. The county manager's raise comes at thirty-five thousand dollars, where somebody set the starting salary is thirty-one thousand dollars for, for a worker. There are also two percent raises, but from past observation, the modus operandi is next year, the poor ones will be blessed with large raises. I compiled a spreadsheet of raises given from six years ago to now, six-year totals have ranges run like twenty percent, thirty percent, up to fifty percent, zero to fifty percent, forty-seven percent exactly. What entity can afford to give raises such as these? And the pension increases, of course, increase the same. During this time, we have seen Rummel's County Hospital sold, the engineering department disbanded, the county jails and juvenile detention hall both closed. The county employee count has gone down from around twenty-eight-hundred-six years ago to twenty-four-nine-one last year, to now two thousand and ninety-six people, a number stated by Commissioner Maravella. The county manager even has a deputy county manager at his disposal. A smaller county government, less responsibility, less workload, headaches, in coordination, prove no reason for such large increases in salary. Meanwhile, your constituents are surely struggling, laid off pay, work cutbacks, rent moratorium and many other small businesses now closed. Our county always ranks in the top ten worst counties of taxation versus income. And we're seeing this by handing out twelve million pounds of food during this pandemic. And, and on this agenda is about twenty-four social service programs for, for the residents. One more observation, of course, and I say this every year, for the smaller county government, the county taxes have never gone down in those six years. I, I hope the commissioners have the passion and integrity in recognizing that, you know, the county is hurting, so don't be tone deaf. I have some suggestions possibly. Instead of these huge raises, how about stipends of some sort? Or give the raises one year and then take them all back the next year? And that way it'll be like a bonus that they got. Uh, or just both no and redo it. And last, uh, last suggestion, and I beseech the upper management to get these raises, to, to recognize what I can say, turn down the raises for just two percent raises. That would be more powerful. Uh, just in closing, uh, from the New Jersey State Local Government Ethics Law, the vitality and stability of representative democracy depends upon the public's confidence in the integrity of its elected and, and appointed representatives. Thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else who should speak?
My name is Mara Montgomery from Clark, New Jersey. I am one of the shop stores in CWA Local Ten Eighty, and I help to represent over three hundred and fifty people that work for the Union County Division of Social Services. We currently have been out of contract since July of twenty twenty, and now in the process of negotiations with management. Management has only offered us a two percent raise for one year and has tried to get us to give up Lincoln holiday in order to get you team. Union County Division of Social Service Office has been open and present throughout the entire pandemic and are asking for the county commissioners to report that you support CWA and asking for five percent raises for all employees. Our health benefits have not been frozen, our pension costs continue to rise, and our agency has worked consistently and remained open throughout the COVID pandemic and all other New Jersey state emergency closures, such as these storms and hurricanes. We were denied hazard and essential pay, even though we never closed throughout all of those occasions. We were even denied adding being called essential employees in our contracts and/or being given essential IDs to travel when our offices not closed in New Jersey State Governor's weather emergency. Another denial was waiving the Union County residency requirement of fifteen years to county employees, not understanding why, when we have our county manager, our division head and our division director who all live out of county. Just to add insult to injury, social service employees are currently receiving positive COVID tests among employees at least once a week, and we are required to use our own time, as my coworker indicated earlier. Again, our vice members commissioners and public know, Union County Division of Social Service workers have volunteered and helped work each and every one of the county's food drives. We, county administration, yet, thank you.
Hello, I am back up at the mic. Um, my original question was a question as a county resident.
If this is quick, I'll let it go, but usually we have one time to speak per.
Okay, I didn't know, I was coming up before as a county resident, now I'm coming on behalf of CWA Local Ten Eighty.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm reading on behalf of the president because I am a county resident. Um, I didn't even read what I wanted to read for myself. So I'm reading it on behalf of all our members that are here. I stand before you this evening to address the upsetting treatment of CWA and its members that they've received in the last several months. Although we have tired sleep, worked throughout the pandemic, serving the needs of Union County residents, the county has failed to acknowledge our hard work and dedication. CWA represents three hundred and fifty members in many titles of Division of Social Services. Titles include social workers, human service specialists, clerks, employees, paralegals, workers specialists. CWA's contract ended June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, and although we have been bargaining for several months, the county has failed to make reasonable wage offer that reflects the hard work and dedication of its members. Meanwhile, the county is offering members of its administration eighteen, twelve and nine percent increases, yet our members can't keep up with inflation nor the rising cost of health insurance. How fair is that? It is insulting. To add injury, CWA has been faced with a number of attacks and intimidation tactics by leaders of this administration. On Tuesday, November thirtieth, members of our leadership were called to the Union County Police Station to undergo interviews with detectives investigating whether a CWA executive board member introduced chemicals into the workplace. Even more outrageous, police detectives were investigating the posting of union flyers on a union bulletin board asking CWA members to attend the commissioners' meetings. The administration has harassed and bullied our union leadership against standing up for our members, dragging some of them down to the Union County Police Station to question and intimidate them for bogus charges. These ridiculous actions taken by the administration can only be perceived as intimidation and retaliation for protection, union acti, for protective union activity. Since when does the county police investigate postings of a simple flyer? CWA was directly told that our alleged mobilization efforts were not helping to get a contract and would adversely affect our ability to reach an agreement. We haven't done, we haven't even done anything other than flyers on a union bulletin board yet. We are being told we are not going to get a fair contract because of that administration's falsehood. Union County Social Service has volunteered and helped work each and every county food drive, and as a matter of fact, we have the most county workers from our agency work these food drives. We will recognize and receive employee certificates from our division director and our deputy, yet the county administration fails to recognize our contribution to this county the most equitable way possible. Our fight to secure a fair and equal contract has turned into an all-out attack on CWA union and union busting campaign by the administration. In essence, the reason why this, my comments are coming during this time is because when we look at the agenda and we see how you guys are giving, um, raises and you totally disregard what's going on with us, even right before we came here today, your county lawyer called us and asked us that she would, that they would give us thousands of dollars back for our medical and only two percent, just so that we wouldn't come in here tonight, when in fact, when we actually do our contract, we're going to end up getting back money anyway. In essence, we're just here because we just want fair wages and to be treated fair and appreciated. We work hard and we get treated like we're the bottom of the barrel because we work at social service. And a lot of times, people who are at the top, because as a leader for me too, sometimes I don't always know what's going on at the bottom at my job. So sometimes when we're at the top, we don't know what the people at the bottom are doing. So like, nobody has actually come out to our agencies to see what we do. It's just, social services lazy, they don't want to work, when in fact, every agency in this county has probably some lazy workers. But I can honestly say from clericals on up, my people work, we bust our tails.
Okay, can you, can you?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else who should speak? Please come forward. Okay, I want to make sure those people are coming to speak. All right, I'll close that portion of the meeting.
Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, just to add, I've been in contact with the employee from Office of Public Information. I confirm that there's no one in that room and I also confirm that with our chair, so no one is using, uh, who have set aside for this meeting.
Everybody who wanted an opportunity to speak has had the opportunity to speak, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, um, I guess I, I have a couple of comments. I don't see if my colleagues or county managers, anything that they would like to add. Um, first of all, from a standpoint of negotiation, that's why I kind of stopped the gentleman from, um, my perception was he was trying to negotiate in public, we, we don't, we're not responsible for negotiation, right? That's a day-to-day operation of the county and that is responsibility with the county manager and who he designates to do that negotiation. So we don't get involved in negotiation. I know you're appealing to us at this public meeting, I get that, um, but we really don't, we're not involved in that. And when I started hearing who gets what percent and we should get more, that certainly sounds like a negotiation to me, that's why I kind of tried to scare you away from that because that's not what we did. Nor are we going to start, um, practice, the practice of negotiating in public, that's just not how it happens. So, um, I, I feel sad that it's gone on this long. Um, negotiation is a, is a two-way street, so, um, I know that the county manager through negotiating team is working to try to come to some resolution with CWA to find a contract that is agreeable to both parties, right? Obviously, that's how it's supposed to work, and that is how it works. So you can't ask for everything and they can do you nothing, there has to be someplace medium in the middle. Um, to relate it to directors' salaries or anything like that, uh, is, is it an interesting way to, to go about making your point? Um, and I will say, there was a question, and I'd like to address that a little bit, of, is this a performance-related or is it parity-related? And I would suggest that it's both in the county manager's circumstance. Any one of us can speak about the tremendous accomplishments this county manager has brought forward, closing the jail, saving millions of dollars, zero percent tax increases the last couple of years, the entire effort under, they spoke to earlier today about his efforts leading the county in the COVID response, the pandemic response, from testing to vaccinations to food distribution. And then, at the same time, lowering the total amount of employees in our system. So the contributions are there and the significant input that he's made to this county since he started here, reaffirmed by AAA Banera just yesterday, speaks to his accomplishments and what he's done. From a parity perspective, you know, I felt was very important to have our county manager on par in parity with what other county executives make. The county right next to us, the administrator, makes two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. In the county north of us, in Essex County, they have a county executive and a county administrator to the tune of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, those combined positions. He does most of those. So I don't feel like I have to explain any more than that as far as the accomplishments this county manager has brought forward, as well as in my desire to make it more commiserate with people with like responsibilities that he has. So just to let that get out here, that's what I wanted to make clear. The county manager then makes up the increases responsible for, for his leadership team in consultation with myself and the other commissioners. And that's where some of the other increases have come up with. And there are also commiserate with, with accomplishments and also parity with other people that do like jobs. Um, so, you know, from my perspective, it's, um, it's something I was, was hoping we'd get behind us, this negotiation with CWA. There is two sides to every story and there's two people that need to meet in the middle someplace. So I'm going to leave it up to the county manager and negotiating team to continue to work with your negotiating team to find some way to come up with something that's reasonable. You talk about percentages, and sometimes it's neglecting the fact that there's steps included in your contract, and sometimes your increases with the steps and the average increase are more than five percent, six percent sometimes with that step. Okay, then that's the information that I have with some of the team discussing. All right, let's keep control of where we're at the opinion, guys. Have some displeasure with what I'm saying, but I don't expect anybody to be disrespectful. I'm not trying to be disrespectful to you. So at this point, I want to see if any other commissioners have any comments from what was brought up from the public? If not, we'll move forward.
No comment. So, Chair, Chair, um, some of the information you provided, that's all I've been asking for from the moment that this particular issue was brought up. Um, I did request, was there an equity study? We think about diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. Um, I started the day with that type of conversation. So when I hear the information you're providing, it's very helpful, but it wasn't shared with all the commissioners, at least it was not shared with me. Um, and I did request that information, I attempted to ask where the information is because again, everything you said about the county manager and working, whether the workers or even our administration, again, it's not anything I, it's we. We have all worked, we've all contributed, we've all done a lot of really good work and I don't take away from the county manager, so I do support the effort and that's why my vote is not no, but my vote is, if we're going to be able to be transparent and be able to articulate that we support, um, when we're doing raises and why we're doing raises, there should not be an issue as a commissioner that this information should be shared. If I requested, it should be provided, it was not. I'm not on the finance committee, I asked two of the finance committee members and others who have not had the information, as you mentioned, it wasn't a collective decision, it was something that the county manager was able to do in consultation, it was something you were able to do, but I've been elected since two thousand and four, and this is something new to me, that this is very important, two thousand and four. I've been elected since two thousand and four in my career as a public servant, so I have had many roles and many capacities and I am just, um, again, obviously I was very spirited earlier because I, this was on my spirit of seeing, um, you know, how do we make sure that we collectively make sure that we don't have people feeling bullied, whether on this side or that side, that everyone has a voice and that we can support it because there were some increases that I asked. were some increases that I absolutely support, and there were some increases I just had questions about, but I appreciate hearing that there was some study done or equity, you know, um, contribution, but I just wish it wasn't just tonight that I had to hear it, because I would have been fully in support if I just had the data that I could have been able to advocate it properly so that when members come here, or workers, or employees, or the publics have questions, I'm not in the dark like anybody else. So hopefully in the future, we will be a little bit more transparent on issues such as this, because I know how hard everyone up here works, I know how hard our directors work, I know how difficult it can be, uh, but again, this is about being transparent, making sure that we have a unified voice so that we can advocate what is happening, and so all the things that you picked off, unfortunately, I haven't been in the room to have those conversations, and I wish we had it earlier, not tonight. So again, um, I'm a little disappointed that I didn't have the information as requested, I know you brought this up to me initially, but since this initial vote to today, I have not had any additional communication with anyone, although I did reach out. Um, some people said to meet with you tonight, and that's obviously not gonna work if I get the information right now. Um, but again, you know, I have probably voted, what, 99% with this board, because I believe in this board, I think that everyone in this room, um, if you have had challenges, do know that this board up here truly cares about working, and your shirt is not just an advertisement, but we all have been out there. And there are gonna be disagreements, we may not always agree, but it's how we respect each other and get to the finish line. So I hope that with this board, we will deal with the issues within the unions, the appropriate administration, it is not the commissioners, uh, but I do want you guys to understand we value that you're here, but just this is not the way, as my chairman has stated, it's not the way that you go about trying to negotiate. So please, stay focused, please make sure you do bring your issues to us, not just at a meeting, because like me, you need to make sure that you do the work before you just get to a meeting, so that you're properly respected, valued, and that you can make sure that you are just as much as part of Union County as anyone up here who we get elected, but you are paid to come and perform a job, but we wanna make sure that we're doing the right thing, not just when it's popular, but every time. So those are my comments on this issue. I do, again, I will state, I support the raises with the reason, but I wish I had the documentation just to back it up as opposed to hearing it tonight. Thank you.
Okay, um, just, just one quick comment, Commissioner Garrettson. Um, so, um, I've been on this board for a long time. I've never had a circumstance where I had a question from this county manager or any other county manager or any director that I didn't get an answer to. So I'm frustrated and sorry that you feel that way, that it happened to you. Never happened to me in 24 years.
I didn't state the county manager.
Okay, well, who, whoever you were referring to.
I'm saying the finance committee that you, you said you proposed.
Right, I was respectful when you were speaking.
And I'm respectful too, very, very politely, because we don't, this, we've never had any public issue, this shouldn't be an issue tonight, we may disagree on process, but we're not, this is not an argument, this is just us communicating and getting our points of mind. But please, I want to correct, because I did not say that I had an issue with the county manager.
Okay, so I, so I never had that experience, so I don't know how you, how you feel without not having the correct information or any answers to the questions you had beforehand. Um, so, I guess if I, if I was in that circumstance, I might feel that way too, but I, I didn't, I didn't have that experience, I don't know.
But that's not what I stated. I stated, let me just, so that it's clear, again, I stated that this particular issue was not something that was a committee, it didn't go before the finance committee, as you shared tonight. You said you made a decision, you said the county management manager made a decision based on his expertise with his staff. All I'm saying is that my, since I've been elected since 2004 in various capacities, typically, when you are expending public money, you want it to be a committee. You wanna be it because, and that's why I said, 99% of the time, most of the issues, I've always supported. This is just one that I just did not have the information from a committee to push it forward so that I could properly make a decision.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Very good. Anybody else have any comments? They wanna make this time for a call for a moment. Okay, uh, Mr. Clerk, please call and roll.
Commissioner Garrettson. Respectfully, I abstain.
Excuse me, uh, point of order, Chairman?
Yeah.
I think I need to move your.
Oh. Excuse me, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I guess, please make the motion.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, Jim, do you have to do anything now, or are we just starting the deal by?
Negative, you can.
Okay, fair enough. Uh, I move ordinance number 835-2021 for final reading and authorize the clerk of the board to advertise same in accordance with the law.
Okay, may I have a second, please? I'll hold a second. Mr. Clerk, please call and roll.
Yes, Chairman. So, Commissioner Garrettson?
This is the third time, I will respectfully abstain.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Houda?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalki?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmeri Mude?
Aye.
Commissioner Stink?
Yeah.
And Chairman Mirabell?
Aye.
Chairman, you have seven votes in the affirmative with one abstention.
Okay, very good. Uh, may I have a motion now to suspend the rules to allow for the joining of both the public comment on resolutions, the law for adoption, and the public comment for any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of this county and to one, uh, public comment section. Some of, move back Commissioner Houdak, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Houdak, Mr. Clerk, please call and roll.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Houdak?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalki?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmeri Mude?
Aye.
Commissioner Stink?
Yes.
And Chairman Mirabell?
Aye.
Chairman, you have eight votes in the affirmative.
Okay, the rules are suspended, the meeting is held for the public for speaking on anything on the agenda or any other matter on people who may be of interest to this county. Please state your name, hometown, and adhere to the five-minute time limit. Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll close this portion of the meeting. I don't have time for the photography, if somebody wants to speak, please come forward.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the County Board. Bruce Patterson, Chicago, New Jersey, uh, to the resolutions number 863 on page four. Uh, this is, this is, uh, $1.1 million for homeless spending plan. Uh, we're faced, we're faced with the moratorium coming up on January, it's the rent moratorium, and I'll tell you, there's gonna be a lot of people in large hurt if they're not able to afford the rent, especially with the tax rate. Uh, this $1.1 million may go so far, but I'll tell you, I'm, I'm prepared to see maybe two to three million dollars. I know you're sitting on like a hundred million dollars running surplus and close to jail, so you got plenty of money, so you should be able to handle this moratorium impact coming up. Uh, on page five, 868 and 869, uh, you're increasing the spending, uh, we're buying food from, uh, building supermarket in Garjulo, and you mentioned 12 million pounds of bean and handing out, and that, that is, that's a lot. And, and this is what we're facing, that our county has been, and yet, and yet you just agreed to give all these large raises. To tell you the truth, I mean, you guys have told death to really what's out here. I mean, you sit there and you, and you argue, that was nice, and, and it, it just didn't work out. It wasn't good, you're, you're doing it wrong, I suggested some items. Uh, page five, number 870, uh, yeah, that's the UC Marine, that's the ship that you're selling to, uh, another town, and, and hopefully this closes the chapter on, on the farce that we call the Union County Davy, that it shouldn't have been, that was plenty other, uh, entities that watch our waterways and our shoreline, and I couldn't believe that you did. But anyway, um, 882, page six. Uh, resolution approving constitutional officer salary, that's, you know, we just got done with, with the upper management salary, I'd like to hear what this is, please explain what the officers, the officer salary, the constitutional officer, and what they're getting, and their raises also. Uh, 886 is a lease agreement, we're cornerstone for $4.8 million. I'd like to know what the breakdown of that is, where the $4.8 million in services that we are receiving. Uh, page nine, 906 to 909, it's more election expenditure.
I'm sorry, I missed the last number, what was you saying, what number was?
It was, I'll tell you, you guys moved numbers around in the last 24 hours, but anyway, it is 896.
896.
Right. 906 and 909 is expenditures of $3 million, more expenditures for the election. This is, this is, uh, an interesting one, because you're including 2022 and 2023, and to tell you the truth, it should be broken down, I say, what is 2022 expenditures and what will be 2023 expenditures, only because I asked that question, because the private entities can suck up all of this money for 2022, and then you're also becoming the taxpayers hat in hand, asking for monies for 2023. So somewhere there has to be a demarcation between those two years, so we don't see just money flying out the window. Uh, page 11, 917, uh, increasing the pool of money up to $190,000 for educational reimbursement in that, unfortunately, I was walking back and I missed what, uh, there was a question on that. But anyway, the, uh, I got an issue because, uh, Finance Director Vivian Taylor, in my opinion, fraudulently using a lot of that money for non-essential education that has nothing to do with her finance. Uh, page 12, uh, this is 930, there's housing vouchers, only $4,000, but I'll tell you right now, be prepared, really shouldn't be spending a lot more money. Page 13, 931, uh, $50,000 expenditures, it sounds vague, uh, I need clarification on that. Page 13, 932, uh, we're paying Elizabeth lawyers for some reason for this, this complex, this Union County Administration complex, boondoggle that's falling apart. Elizabeth took it on herself to secretly designate the property as a redevelopment for the county and to pay for studies, so Elizabeth should be taking on that liability, whatever it is, we should be paying, they should be paying, they started this whole boondoggle. Page 13, 934 to 935, it's finalizing bargaining unit agreements, uh, could you please?
Mr. Patterson, give it a second.
Okay, just give over two of salaries for that, thank you very much for allowing me there.
The salary benefits for what?
Uh, 934 and 935.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Uh, let's, uh, start with Director Emerson. If we can talk about 863 and 868 and, I think, 896. I don't know if that was more of a comment about that not being enough or being enough money for the homeless.
There's a comment.
There's a comment?
All right.
I think the only question was really 96.
Okay, go ahead and answer that, right there.
Um, so the rent breakdown for Cornerstone, um, includes the taxes, utilities, um, property insurance, as well as more of the operational services such as dietary, housekeeping, et cetera, and it's, um, it is a 2% increase here.
Okay, very good. Uh, I'll, I'll mention that the constitutional increases were 2%. County Manager, can you handle the rest?
Sure, uh, 934, 935 is 2%. For 932, um, the only issue with the city of Elizabeth is that the government complex is located in there, there's nothing to do with the city or litigation with the city, involving the city or anything else with the city.
Okay, County County Manager, County Council, anything on 931 and 932?
Uh, 931, just to clarify, these are, uh, litigation expenses, uh, court reporters, expert witnesses, uh, we, we've had a fairly normal amount of litigation this year, but our ancillary costs are up just a little, so this is just to cover the last couple bills that we have for the year. Uh, 932, I think the county manager answered, this is litigation having nothing to do with the city, it's the county defending, uh, our right to build those buildings.
All right, very good. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward.
Chairman, I just wanted to, just a point of, uh, creation, uh, I believe the comment was the designation was done by the city of Elizabeth in secret, that's a public designation, designated by the governing body through a public and open process, just to be clear.
I'm glad you pointed that out, that's true.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, John Varia, kind of worked there, just a bit more housekeeping. Is this being recorded or how is this gonna be put up on the website? Is that, is it that camera or?
It's being recorded, yes.
Hasn't it moved ever?
Being recorded, it's right there.
So that, it's that camera over there to mail?
It's being recorded, yes.
When is this gonna appear, or how, or you're not gonna do any more zooms, I guess?
We're not anticipating any more zooms at this point unless the pandemic, uh, brings us back to our point, um, this meeting will be distributed like, like every other meeting is.
I forgot.
To the individual towns, is that responsible for area on their public site?
Chairman, if I may add as well, um, our Public Information Office, it, uh, works with a video editor that's here tonight, uh, who was employed by the county, and typically it takes, certainly within the week, um, depending how long it takes to splice and, and edit it as appropriate, um, we'll have it on our website as soon as possible. So probably within, you know, three business working days, I would imagine, we'd be up in the month.
Okay, very good, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, I'll close that portion of the meeting. And I'll ask for a motion to adopt resolutions 2021-855 to 2021-945. May I have a motion, please?
So.
Move by Commissioner Koops, may I have a second? Second by Commissioner Garrettson. Mr. Clerk, please call and roll.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Houdak?
Uh, abstain on 917, aye to the rest.
Commissioner Kowalki?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmeri Mude?
Aye.
Commissioner Stink?
Yes.
Chairman Mirabell?
Aye.
Chairman, you have eight votes in the affirmative with the exception of, uh, resolution nine, uh, 2021-917, you have seven votes in the affirmative and one abstention.
Okay, very good, thank you very much. We will move on to Commissioner comments. And we are gonna start with Commissioner Garrettson.
Thank you so much, uh, Chair. Yesterday, I had the pleasure of attending an Allen County event, um, it was specifically, um, the 1972 Black Political Convention that was coming to Newark in 2022. It was very profound to see the likes of Mayor Baraka and Mayor Lumumba, who, um, both fathers were truly a part of the movement, and I was just really excited to be able to extend that, um, county initiative all around the state and the country and all around really the world, will be joining that movement, so I'm really excited to be a part of that, it will be at NJIT, um, it was really a wonderful sight to see, but the day before that, I got to come in our own county, um, I think we're gonna be posting, I'm not sure if it's up yet or not, but I did attend with Commissioner Houdak, we attended the legislative day at King University, it was wonderful to see all the amazing work that's happening under the president, uh, but also just the partnership with the county, and it was truly a pleasure. I continue to be very motivated and moved by all the good work that is happening out throughout the year with the food distribution, Thanksgiving just came, we all must be grateful and thankful for what we can do as our family, but also make sure that we stay the course and be passionate about the work that we do. So I'm very excited to also, um, share that we do have some recommendations for some diversity, equity, and inclusion coming out of one of the committees that I do particularly sit on, so I'm looking forward to doing that, and I wanna thank all the commissioners and actually the administration and administrators who attended Atlantic City, there was an event that was hosted down there, it was called NJ19, on behalf of the Black County Caucus that helped change the preholder name to county commissioners last year, so I do wanna thank everyone who attended that, it was really a wonderful, um, gathering and a beginning to bring people together, and that's what this is all about, to make sure that we have a collective voice, a supportive voice, and make sure that when we talk about being a progressive county, to truly be able to embrace it. So I'm really excited to, um, end this year, we have some holidays coming up, it's lovely to be back on the dais with my colleagues, and I look forward to working with all of you. God bless, and it's, um, having. God bless, and have a great rest of the December until I see you again.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lu De.
Thank you, Chair. Welcome back, everyone. It is really happy and exciting time for us to be back in person. I hope that we have the opportunity to continue to meet in person moving forward. Yesterday, I had the opportunity, along with Commissioner Granados, to stop by the Brand Fresh Start Mobile program. And I just want to say it is really a fantastic, all-hands-on-deck opportunity for our county. I think we, as our chairman said, we are the first county to launch this program. And it is really just such a service to our residents in need. It was really humbling to see so many people there and taking advantage of necessities that we take for granted. We are in December, and that means the holidays are well underway. I wanted to just give you a couple of updates on events that are coming up. Of course, we want to continue to be COVID cautious and COVID safe. But on Sunday, December 5th, we have our sensory-friendly theater, The Nutcracker, at the Union County Performing Arts Center in Rahway. It is sensory-friendly, so it's open to all, and we hope that our residents will take advantage of that. On Saturday, December 11th, we have a free holiday concert featuring Taron Brooks and the Company Men at the vocational technical school in Scotch Plains. It's a free concert, however, you do need to make a reservation, so please log on to ucmj.org/reserve. And our Model Train Holiday Show in Open House continues on Saturdays and Sundays at the Model Railroad Center in Union Township. I've also visited that along with Commissioner Kowalski and the individuals that keep that place running are so passionate about trains and what they do there. And it's really remarkable and great for people of all ages. So I encourage you to check that out. And we also have winter programs, including horseback riding, nature activities, and other programs for people with special needs. So continue to check our social media and website for that information. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Leon?
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving. And just like we're in December, this holiday season is upon us, and it's time of reflection and giving thanks for family, Christ, and good health. So as we spread the holiday cheer with gifts and treats, let's all remember also to share the holiday spirit. I have been visiting the last couple of days, toy drives and other charitable events around Union County, and I'm truly impressed with the generosity of our community. I also have seen how much need is out there and still remains unfulfilled. At our emergency food distribution event at Kane last week, it was heartbreaking to know that people were already lined up at 2:30 a.m. to make sure they receive food right before the holiday. We provided food supplies for 2,000 households during that event, and it still wasn't nearly enough. I'm very proud of my Union County family and all they're doing. I want to thank the staff and all the volunteers who worked tirelessly to load all these supplies as they have since been doing since they first began the emergency food program. And I also want to thank Director Anderson, because she's nonstop working. I want to encourage everyone to remember that those who need a helping hand this season, please give a little. I mean, Christmas is not just about giving. And in closing, I just want to say, to give the gift of help this year. Make sure that your loved ones get the medicine or the booster. We want to know, we want to keep them alive. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Granados?
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to start by thanking and showing that we do respect every single person that did speak here today at the commissioner meeting. You know, we already sometimes have different viewpoints and different ways of looking at topics of conversation, but having a discussion is most important, so we thank you for being here and having that conversation. Commissioner Palmeri Muda talked about the Fresh Start program. That was one of the initiatives of Chairman Mirabell. And just to add upon it too, this program, this initiative truly is amazing. It's not only providing individuals with mobile showering, bathrooms, doing laundry, but more importantly, wraparound services. I know yesterday, we had a conversation with Director Anderson and Commissioner Holmes and other county individuals into a couple who basically were sleeping inside their car, who don't have jobs, who don't have housing, and were attending this Fresh Start Initiative program. So while they took access of the showering, of the laundry, of the restrooms, they also, right after they exited, had county staff from human services there to speak with them in reference to housing, in reference to employment, in reference to making sure that the services they needed were going to be worth them being provided for them. So for that, I think our grandest and I know is initiative also of public safety, parks, employees, it truly is all the departments of the county union working together on this initiative in making sure that we're not only providing this mobile unit on a grassroots level, but more importantly too, making sure that we provide the necessary services our residents need. So I just want to thank everybody for doing that and want to wish everybody a happy holiday season. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kowalski?
Thanks, Chairman. I think I'll bank on comments for tonight.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hudek?
Thank you, Chairman. Just, I wanted to join the commissioners in acknowledging those employees from the CWA, Collective Bargaining Unit, who was here tonight. And I would echo the chairman's comments in that I certainly appreciate there are many opinions that were offered, but, you know, our process for collective bargaining has consistently been, as long as I've been on this board, to handle that at the negotiating table and to keep comments in terms of contract negotiation off this board, because that's just not the form of government that we're in. I certainly want to acknowledge the work of the individuals who are volunteering at the food distribution. And a couple of speakers referenced that this evening, and I know most of the members of the board have been to them, and, you know, I see county managers, there has been a fixture at them as well. You know, it's, you know, the 2:00 a.m. point that Commissioner Leon made is, it does talk about the staggering need, and, you know, you know, I typically bring my children for the opportunity, and it's an opportunity to assist the residents of Union County who are in need. And it makes an impression on their lives. And so we do welcome volunteers to those efforts for those who might want to assist their neighbors, because there's quite a bit of need and there's always a vehicle to volunteer. And with that, all of my comments. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Statham?
Thank you, Chair. First, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out this evening. I'm very happy to be back to in-person meetings. I think my colleagues have covered everything that's been going on in Union County, so I'll bank the rest of my time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. So I'm also happy to be back in person and want to congratulate Commissioner Leon for her first in-person meeting. Besides swearing in day, reorganization day, this is the first time we've probably all been together for a meeting since then. And you did great, so congratulations.
Thank you.
So everybody referenced the food distribution, and it is this Saturday, in case it wasn't brought up, at the Kane University at 8:00, so please feel free to join in there. Earlier this week, I had an opportunity to attend the 10-year anniversary of the Wenzhou Kane University campus. And many, many years ago, I had the opportunity to visit, and China established the sister city agreement with Union County and the city of Wenzhou, China. And what I thought back in the day was going to be a business-type relationship, and there is some business relationship between our two partners. It really turned into an educational relationship. And the fact that President Ferrari and now President Repellet have put such work into establishing this university and carrying it forward is just significant, and I'm very proud to be a part of it from the beginning to this day. And I was really happy on Monday to do kind of a simulcast with our Chinese partners in China, Chairman Wang over there, assembled, besides President Repellet, was former Governor McGreevy, who was really instrumental in establishing this relationship with Wenzhou, former Senator Lesniak, our own Senator Nick Skatary, Chris Olwich, Mayor of Elizabeth. And it was just a wonderful chance to get together and celebrate this decade of partnership with our partners in China. So it was wonderful. As we talk about the holidays approaching, I want to encourage people to shop local and best they can shop in their downtowns. We have wonderful downtowns in Union County, wherever you live, and in each town, there's a wonderful area to shop. And I encourage people to do that. It's so easy to go online and order something that's delivered the next day, but think about the shop owners who try to keep their stores open and keep them in line this holiday season. And I'm looking forward to the holidays approaching. I want to, it's more in the middle of Hanukkah, which our Jewish residents and all residents who could share a happy Hanukkah. No, this is the fourth night, fifth?
Fifth.
The fifth night. I looked right over to Bruce. But Hanukkah is not just for Jews or Jewish. My daughter, many, many years ago, bought a menorah, and we light the menorah every year. So we are representing too, so that's great. And I wish everybody a pleasant holiday season and a safe one at that. I don't think there's any more business for this board, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Garrettson, second by Commissioner Lu De. Mr. Clark, please call and roll.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Mr. Granados?
Aye.
Mr. Hudek?
Aye.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Aye.
Mr. Palmeri Muda?
Aye.
Mr. Statham?
Yes.
And Chairman Mirabell?
Aye.
Chairman, you have eight votes in the affirmative. Can you turn this to the end?
Thank you.